Well, look at Angela dancing in his restaurant. He made, if not only did he make, he made international.
Cause your mother bought that building.
But what I'm saying is they do things to draw people in. We don't do anything to draw people in. We don't either like our waterfront because they, they put it down out there, which I'm even scared to go out there and fish off of it. I'm scared to even walk out there and they should've did a better layout of that. I mean, who dumps barges up against, who dumps that?
Some people dock, get boats, they pull their boat down there and get on it and go on to return it home.
Yeah, you can't, you do that. I don't know, it's really shaky for me.
I seen them doing it. Yeah, I know, I see, absolutely. I see people pull up in their car with the boat, take it off the trailer, big dock it there and they go on the river and come back. People fish their tuna. I know, it's shaky, absolutely. Barge coming.
And don't let a barge come through the water down there.
You better hang on.
You get a seatbelt.
That's scary.
I just love going to Menominee Hall and just sitting on the bleachers, watching the boats come up and down.
Off the tour.
And sometimes the boat owners have parties on their boat.
Yes, they have fireworks there too. Fireworks.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of events. They utilize it.
And even though the train comes through there, that's not a deterrent?
Yeah, that's true.
So, yes, I have a lot to say. Cause I feel as though we've been handed the shorthand of the stick by these administrations and I personally do not like it. Cause I'm saying if you're gonna use my tax money.
Not a lot going on, but I'm good. Family and all kinds of stuff.
No, you didn't have to come.
I have a right to say.
It seemed like you'd be going here.
What goes on in my town.
We can't have anybody else besides the two of us. Three becomes four.
My mom, they'll take my money.
If they do, I'll walk out. Seriously, I got stuff to do, so if somebody else comes, I will.
I really.
No, I would.
I got this.
I would.
No, but I mean, if somebody else comes, I will.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I don't.
Go up to Lawrenceville.
I can stay there. I can stay for like an hour.
Down from the cemetery. They have satellite.
An hour. That should be good.
They have little boutiques in there. They have little museums in there where people do art shows and things like that. And then there's the old, it's called the Prior Hotel.
Yeah, if someone comes in, I'm gonna leave them. Cause really, we can't have.
It was an old building monastery.
I do have other plans, but I'll stick to Lisa.
They turned it into a hotel. That first had seven, two rooms.
But I don't, I don't, no one else said they were.
They have the huge courtyard.
Was it in yesterday's paper?
They have a huge banquet hall. I guess this is where the monks or the priest.
But you make me buy your paper all the time.
That's mine paper. I got ten times information. Get that paper. That's fifty percent harder. There he is.
So my.
How about you?
There's coffee and donuts over there.
Who's over there?
Coffee and donuts.
Excuse me. The Chamber of Commerce made the city, it did compromise.
Donuts are not good food.
Did you say those here?
You think I don't know that?
They would have eaten my donuts.
I did, I did, I did.
You should've bought apple pie, pineapple pie.
Oh, that's good for.
When I left here, I left here in nineteen seventy-one.
What, how you doing?
Virginia, Maryland and, I mean, from Virginia to D C to Maryland. Forty-four years I've done it.
Yeah, I was dying.
Where's the car?
You said it was in yesterday's paper.
It's a very good place in this area because you got the military there, you got the government there, you got Barack there.
It was in today's community corner or whatever they call that little.
Yeah.
Yeah, yesterday in the classifieds.
One was in classic, one was in community corner.
Yesterday's in classifieds and today's in that community. Small, yeah. I know.
They must charge you.
They do. No, it's not that bad.
Right, because in nineteen eighty.
That's what they're saying.
Maybe she made the choice or Frederick without my mind. Going on break and coming three hours to get home from Rockville in a snowstorm. And if I had to go to Frederick, that'd be another.
Hey, Michael.
If I made it.
Hey, Michael, you can't eat that stuff.
I first moved down.
I already had one.
Don't get no more.
Yeah, it's all, it's all different people.
Different, I'm impressed.
No, I used to have the, this is the thing, I used to.
You should've put, you had donuts in drinks.
I think he did. He was, it did say refreshments.
Refreshments, but you didn't spell out what they were.
Said coffee and refreshments.
She put donuts. Everybody's hooked on donuts, that's sugar.
You eat donuts in the morning.
I don't.
One diet, but then again, I watch my blood sugar and I have to eat sugar every once in a while.
I eat rye, fried seeds or the German eight drink in the morning. So peanut butter, blackberry jelly, a couple of carbs.
Yeah, just for everybody's information, we are live on YouTube as we speak, so.
When, today?
Right now.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't know you were recording today.
Pushing this to YouTube today. Unless I've done something wrong, you know, I did, I don't know what to do, it looks like.
If you did something wrong, don't edit nothing. Let it play.
Here's what it is. Here's what it is.
It is what it is.
You want transparency first.
What are you getting at?
Yeah, but then I slept on it. Look what I did to it. I gotta take a shower tomorrow and get it all loose. Where you going?
Right here.
I said, they just gotta respect the snow. The only thing that I found out, see now, we respected our twenty-five mile speed limit going through. Up here. And I was around there five streets and they were even.
They don't.
Grabbing like that up here.
I gotta go water.
You say six o'clock or six fifteen?
Six.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and get started here. Let me, let me just say first off, I'm impressed that anybody showed up at all. That's encouraging for one. For two, I wanna keep this just as free flowing as possible. If it gets totally out of control where everybody's talking over top of each other, we'll have to do something in order to control that. I don't know what it is, but we'll do something. Last but not least, there's plenty of coffee, there's plenty of donuts over there. Everybody's welcome to do it. I do ask that if you wanna talk though, you talk such that it can be picked out by the YouTube microphones.
Can we talk right here?
That microphone's live. We got one pointed your direction over there. You can talk loud or you can step up to the microphone. The microphones are actually pretty good. They, they do a very good job of capturing audio, so I don't think there'll be any problem, but just so everybody knows. Other than that, it's a free form, free, free flow. I would like to just say a couple of things just because I think it's important to the city. I was visited today by a, a young lady by name of, oh my goodness, I left her card up there. But she's from a company called A V M. And what they do is they try to come in and make cities, schools and counties more efficient. And they make their money off of the savings that a city, school or county saves. And the way they do this is to come in and say, we'll replace all your lights with L E D lights. We'll, we'll come up with ways to run your thermostat and ways to save you some money. We'll, we'll do certain things that save you money and our, our cut of this comes off of that for some period of time. They charge absolutely zero to do the study to figure out if it's even viable. But if once they, they determine it's viable, you have to enter into a agreement that says, yeah, you're gonna do what they say and you're gonna let them earn some money at the same time. The other thing, just so people, and I'm not saying it's a good idea or not, I, I really don't know. It's something that we can talk about a little bit here if you guys are interested in, I'll give you the copy of the information if you're interested in it. The other thing is, is I spent a lot of time going through all the property the city owns. And there's some three hundred plus properties the city owns. The city owns a lot of property. I put together a map of where the biggest concentration of that is. And my thinking is that most of this property is vacant property. We need to come up with something to do with that property. Maybe it's side lots for people that live next door. Maybe it's a, a mother-in-law house for somebody that wants to build a house. But maybe, just maybe, we use some of this property and let the Nehemiah group look at it and say, you know what? There's a neighborhood over here we would like to start in for building homes. And if they can get all their financing together and build some low-cost homes, they can do something. Go ahead, Ernie, speak up.
Okay. First of all, this city needs an economy, okay? And ju-just parsing out abandoned homes ain't gonna do it.
I agree. We can talk about that, that's a separate subject.
But that's what really hurt in the city. A- and these partial homes, how many of them are owned by the redevelopment?
None, zero.
So this is only city owned. And how many does redevelopment own?
I didn't even look at that.
You didn't look at it? Okay, now most of these squares that you got, plots. Okay, how many are downtown? School, make and donate?
Uh, I don't, quite a few of them, but I don't think I even put that on the map, cause that wasn't what I was trying to do. I was trying to show residential stuff.
I know, but residential ain't gonna cut it. How many people moved into this city since twenty twenty? And how many people moved out? More people moved out. That's all I know.
The only thing I'm saying, I, I don't disagree with what you said, but I would like to say something, that there are a lot of people in this town that I think would need a better place to live, for one. For two, I think if we're gonna grow this town, we gotta have a place for people to go. It's gonna have to happen at the same time we bring somebody in to invest in this town to do something. But all this needs to be in place at the same time.
A better place to live. The economy, we don't have it. The school district, five hundred and forty-six rank on the bottom compared to five hundred and eighty-nine schools in Pennsylvania. So where's there a better place to live? Which is gonna come in and make a part of land look nice?
Nobody's arguing with you. And you're, you're trying to pick a fight with someone.
No, I'm not trying to pick a fight.
That's not gonna pick a fight with you.
I'm not trying to pick a fight. Now, I'm just trying to emphasize that you guys get missing the ball. The ball is the economy. And second, you got a school district that sits up there as a dictatorship. And all they do is they concentrate on behaviorism, not learning. And, and that's the big problem today. They're equating behaviorism as if you're education. No, it ain't. Behaviorism, you're in a straitjacket and you're told what to do by the authorities. You don't think for yourself, you can't read and you cannot add numbers. That's what behaviorism is about. And nobody's doing nothing about it.
So what's yours really?
What's that?
What do you say about it?
Well, they gotta get back to the basics. Reading, writing and everything. Not only just behaviorism, or they put ideology, we're gonna be L B G T. Or you could be any gender you want. What kind of, is that learning? Come on, give me a break. This is a new world order bullshit that is dumbing down the population so that everybody will fall in some sort of a category. So the ruling class could manipulate all these little pigeonholes.
So you're saying the teachers aren't doing their job?
No, they're not doing their job. They're just earning their paycheck. How many teachers ever complain about the school curriculum? None. But when it comes to making money, more money, they're, they're out on the picket fence.
I think that's a very narrow view, but I'll take it.
Yeah, okay, it's a narrow view.
I can agree with Ernie on that point about the education up at that high school. Because when I came back here, I went up there several times to school board meetings. And when you have a sixth grade student that cannot write his name or don't even know what cursive is, that to me is, how can I say it? It's letting our children down. Because they cannot go anywhere in the United States. They can't work for the Smithsonian.
That's right.
If they run across calligraphy, they'll think it's a foreign language. I don't know if it's the city job to get behind the school board or if it's the residents that have kids to go there. I don't even have any children. And I'm up there fighting for these kids. And city council, it just, it's not, I'm not blaming all of city council, but it's, every parent that has kids up at that school should be up there and every parent teacher conference, every counselor, they, they probably, I bet if you go over and ask them right now, how do you get help to go into college? Who counsels them?
Nobody.
See, I don't know if that's your job, mayor, to hook into the city or just our.
This is school directors. This is school directors.
And their ta- on another side, I just wanna say, and their taxes are just out of the roof.
Yeah, they went up again.
I would think, just from being a member of, I wouldn't, I would think that as you hire electas to be over the city, wouldn't you think the school directors that are voted in would be the ones to oversee curriculum? But I agree also, they're only, I have a friend that has a child up in high school, four parents showed up at the last conference, P J.
Well, first of all.
Four parents.
They don't advertise. They don't induce.
Oh, no, they send letters. They send letters.
They send letters, but they're not doing nothing about it. Well, what does the letter say?
They're sending letters to invite them to come out and see on the status of their children.
They're sending letters to the parents of the children, but we as residents of Menneson are paying their salaries that tax.
That's when you should go to a school board meeting.
And that's when everyone that pays a school tax should go up there and get on their case.
It should be, just like we have Nun Harley here. There, I went to a school board meeting and his absence, he was away. Nobody there except me and the newspaper person.
And I say, I go to all of them except for the one that she's to, has to wait normally is. Nobody goes out.
The newspaper person.
Oh, I know that, just like nobody comes to our meetings.
Yeah, yet we won, you know, I, I feel for you, I feel for the ones that attend here because you have a right to complain, but you come, but where's everybody else? You're living here, but yet you're sitting at home complaining and talking about everything, but you don't come to help. You don't come to support.
Every, I tell you, people come up to me when I'm at Fulham, Walmart, I tell them, don't be asking me, come to these meetings.
So this leads me to the city council should have some sort of footprint in all these organizations. School board.
We, we appoint people to different.
The library board, all of these boards have become.
Yeah, as much as.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna tell you, they are self-appointed, okay? All of them anointed themselves to be the same position to run again. And nobody bothered to like compete with anybody.
You're on that board now.
Well, I can't do too much.
Okay, who's the liaison for the school?
Right now, me. I'm the only one that goes to the meetings. I have, once a month, I get together with Dr. Ma for lunch meeting. I, I visit with him. I am very certain, without any doubt in my mind, that if the school doesn't survive, the city doesn't survive.
Absolutely.
If the city doesn't survive, the school doesn't survive.
Well, that's what we're at.
If we don't work together, it's going absolutely nowhere. The school superintendent is really the person that sets the tone for what school is up there. And I think we, Dr. Ma has only been there for one month, two months now. The point being is, I think that he deserves a chance to, to show the city what he could do. Now, if you just go up and put him on the, on the, on the, put a pitchfork on him and say you're done, that's not a solution either, because he's the only one that can do it right now. They hired a new person. He came from McKeesport, is that right?
McKees Rocks.
McKees Rocks. He, he's a very intelligent man. He's very pragmatic. He, he, he understands the problem. He understands the, the, the city we live in. I think that he deserves a chance to, to show us what he can do.
Ron, let's get back to the real power of the municipality. It's you guys, the city council. You guys should have a footprint. Listen, I don't put all my eggs on some shepherd leader, okay? Just because he has a title and he's the head of the school board, that doesn't mean anything. No, we, we got five people here.
Right.
Okay.
You got.
Up there.
Nine?
It doesn't matter. They all think alike up there. They're, they're, they're all on cahoots with each other.
I think that's where you're making a bad mistake.
Where's the mistake at?
The last election that took place, you had a number of different lines come in and get, get elected. Mark Ballor, Mark.
Mark Ballor's a fake. I don't want him to hear him, okay? He's a fake. The guy goes and joins the lion's club, he joins this club, he goes there one time and then he disappears. Just so he could have, like he is a member of this group.
Well, they don't elect him. But what I'm saying.
I didn't elect him.
They, they elected four or five new, new.
Yeah, they're all the same cookie cutters.
They're very much on different cookie cutters.
Yeah, how they different?
They agree with you, I don't know. But what I am saying is, there's an opportunity now with new people on the board and a new superintendent for new things to happen to the school system. I'm an optimist. I hope that it does.
There's an old saying, when everyone thinks alike, no one thinks very much. And everybody thinks together like a communist unit, okay? That's all I'm gonna tell you. They, they all think like that. And if you're not on board with them, they ostracize you. They, they, they kinda like say, well, he's not one of us.
Excuse me, um, since you were the liaison with the school, why didn't we know that we had no ban up at our school?
Cause I didn't know it. I wouldn't talk about school, the school.
They don't say nothing up there.
Well, but yet and still, no ban? That's like absurd.
No ban, it happened because of COVID and.
I don't wanna hear COVID. COVID is the answer for everything.
This was before, this was before COVID.
Yeah, okay, I don't know, but the story I heard, the story I heard.
Like I said, anything that comes out of my mouth, I researched it before it comes out of my mouth. So I'm just wondering, what does it take?
So you need to go to some of these meetings too. You need to go to some of these meetings too.
She goes sometimes, I go sometimes.
I do that sometimes. I, I don't wanna speak ill of people, but me and Mrs. Spacek had it out. Because she, I knew that she wasn't for our kids. But yet and still, because I raised the fact that she was making over a hundred thousand dollars to be superintendent of school, for what?
And so is this guy too. He's making over a hundred thousand. To do what? Did he put down his vision, how he's gonna make Menneson better? Zero. All we got is a title that we're supposed to worship here. What kind of baloney is this?
Go meet him, go talk to him. Go to one of his meetings. He was very forthright.
Yeah, he's forthright. Wait till I go up and we'll see how forthright he is.
Well, you go attacking people, they're gonna clam up.
I'm not gonna attack them. I'm gonna ask our question.
This is the thing.
Calm your voice down a little bit, get you off.
When we express our thoughts and we talk, because you don't wanna answer, not you personally, mayor, I'm not attacking you. Just because you don't wanna answer the question, it turns into that we're arguing.
That's right.
We're not.
Just keep your, your voice civil and you get you off.
Well, I can't help it because I'm a soprano and my voice elevates. I'm so sorry.
And I'm an author. I'm higher than her.
I'll tell someone lower.
So what I'm saying, I, if I wasn't so passionate about trying to get our city back up on its feet, then I would be like, I wouldn't be here.
There's another thing about the school system that bothers me. And I don't know if this is right, wrong, or how it happened or anything else, but it leads one to think some very ugly things.
Oh, yeah.
Eighteen percent of our population in Menneson's black.
I'm well aware of the percentage.
Sixty percent of the students in, in the school system are black. Now, how does that work? What does that tell you?
They're sitting their kids somewhere else.
Exactly. Something's going on here that's a problem.
Yeah, but it ain't just a racial thing. Cause eighty-five percent of public can't even read up there, okay? So that's not gonna do a color.
I think, I think part of the issue they're leaving is not only the education, but also what takes place at the school. A lot of, like you said, behavior issues, a lot of bullying. There's a lot going on wrong with our school system. I, I actually went to a meeting and we were talking to a group of young people. And there were students that live in Menneson, but they moved to go to Shawlbury. But my thing is, they hated Menneson because they got bullied, they got picked on day in and day out, and they left because of that. So there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed at the school system. That, and my thing is, we may, when now we're talking, we have a town hall meeting, why don't we have some of the school directors here? So that they. Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm just now hearing it now. So at the next one, let's bring some of the school directors here.
Because the school taxes is more than my property.
So, so let's bring, you know, this is good because I'm hearing you. So why, let's bring some of them here next time so that they can answer your questions.
We can invite them, but if, if they're walking into a firing squad, I don't.
Well, where are we walking to? It's not a firing squad. They're, they're voicing their opinions.
We're gonna papa our leaders.
We, we deal with it every, every meeting, so why can't they?
At the last meeting, if you cannot take the criticism, then you need to get out.
Hey, I, I've got pretty fixed skin. I, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this.
Well, yeah, I mean, I've been bashed, I've been bullied, but like I said, it just rolls off because then it lets me know what type of person you are. So I don't even worry about that.
What percentage, what percentage are African-Americans in this school?
In the city, eighteen percent, but sixty percent in the school.
Why aren't there gonna be African-American students in that school system?
No, they said there was a way higher percentage at the school.
Well, why?
Because the other kids are being.
I'm asking on, on, on the, on the, why are there African-American teachers up there? And then they could have.
He used to.
They may have some, I don't know, I don't.
When I asked that same question, Ed, and I asked him, when there's a position available, how do you advertise? That means I learned about black history. I learned black history from my husband. My husband was from DC. It wasn't taught in our school ever that I know of.
And this is black history.
It was later on because Ms. Minnie was a teacher.
Well, nothing was probably after the two seventy-two.
After you were gone, right. Oh, definitely. It was later. Cause I was there when she taught it.
No.
But it wasn't until like the, the seventies that it was starting to be taught by Ms. Minnie and Mr. Davis.
Idabel?
Yes.
Yeah, Idabel died.
And Mr. Davis, right. And that was a long time ago, but that's when it was done.
Well, Idabel was with us and we had the first cleanup in Menneson when we were kids. We did it.
You're in one of the photos too, Greg.
So we bit, we know that part of it. Somewhere along the line. Well, we all, the people who really knew this.
Don't let him have donuts, Mike.
We left. Cause we basically thought we were gonna be working in the mill. So we all went to Pittsburgh, took the civil service testing guy out of Menneson. But what I'm saying is that we wanna bring them back. And let them spread their knowledge that they collected all these years away from Menneson. I, cause I tell my classmates all the time when we have our reunion.
Do you wanna hear how they pick employees today? It's a crime.
No.
I'm gonna tell you how they pick employees. You gotta be a Mason. When you're a Mason, you get a job at the school. You get a job with the police. For some reason, we got this Masonic matrix locked down on Menneson, in the whole valley. Okay, that's how they become, I know five teachers who got a job because they were Masons and they used their Masonic connection to get the job in the school district. Last favor in Menneson.
Masons is the biggest chamber of Congress in the country.
It's also the biggest crime syndicate.
It's the biggest chamber of Congress in the country.
It's also the biggest crime syndicate.
Did anyone wanna see if open it up to see? And I'm sure you guys didn't come for any reason, right? So you probably have something you wanna voice.
Spread this around.
Yeah, right, right.
Other topics we have here.
Well, I think everybody.
Yeah, I'm sure they came for a reason too.
There's reasons on the school system. That's not an issue.
I know it.
I have it.
I think they all came for a reason too.
I have some comments about city administrations in Menneson. And I wrote this out. And personally, mayor, I think you're doing, you're really honestly doing, trying to do the best for Menneson.
Well, let's shut off the system now. We've heard it all.
No, over the, over the past year, I've been thinking about it. And I've been critical, but overall, I think you, you're forthright and, and.
Pretty vindicative.
Yeah, I think so. And you, you don't burst out and talk down to someone. I, I think you're, I think you, you, you have a personality that keeps you from becoming irritated.
That's not why you're gonna appear to talk. So move on.
Okay. I wrote this down. I was thinking this. So it's not long. Let me read it to you. And this concerns, this concerns basically city administrations in Menneson. But now that you've talked about the school system, it probably applies to the school system. So I started out this way. I said, as in most communities the size of Menneson, and Menneson in particular, I don't think I'm wrong in saying that there exists a general apathetic attitude among residents concerning city administrations. concerning city administrations and local politics. And I wanted to give you two reasons why I seem to gravitate towards that idea. First, in Menneson, this is my opinion, one city administration after another, some, and I wanna, I want to emphasize the word some, some of the same faces in city government never seem to go away. Instead of former mayors and council members and other office holders, including authorities such as the redevelopment authority in particular, leaving office they once held and getting on with their lives, they become hangers-on administration after administration. Instead of new faces, new blood so to speak, taking their place, these former office holders become so ingrained in local politics that they keep coming back again and again to take part in civic affairs. By definition, they are not public servants.
No, they're Masons, most of them are Masons.
That I don't, that I don't know.
Okay, I do know who they are.
Second, agree or disagree, and I don't think I'm wrong here. When I say that behind many community governments, and Menneson in particular, there is a hierarchy, I believe, individuals, usually a handful, but there could be many, who are business owners or those higher up in the political ladder, who are the power brokers, who exert direct or indirect influence over city administrations such as here in Menneson. There are individuals who feel their growth in power took time and they should not be questioned. And I'm implying this to Menneson. And maybe those two reasons I just gave you, maybe many in the public think, have the attitude, you can't fight City Hall. Now, and of course, you may agree or disagree with this following. My outlook for Menneson is this, if, and it's a big if, if the public in Menneson does not put forward those individuals who are intelligent enough to discern right from wrong in the political arena, who are not afraid of the political hacks who oppose them when running for office, who have the stamina to run the course for mayor or city council, who are tired of seeing some of the same individuals running city government, and that doesn't apply to you. And who really wants Menneson to, and these people want Menneson to prosper. Then the public, if, if that doesn't happen, then public malaise about local government here in Menneson and other small communities, if, if this malaise in, in, uh, about local government and politics will continue, and the attitude, don't try to fight City Hall, will just prevail. And, and I, I wanted to conclude with two thoughts. When the time comes to vote for new city office holders, I, I, I want the, the residents of Menneson to, to think long and hard. I want them to vote for new faces who have progressive ideas. And, and just as amusement, you know, General MacArthur's farewell speech at West Point in nineteen sixty-two, he quoted a man who, uh, was named Jay Foley, uh, who was involved in World War One. And, and MacArthur said, old soldiers never die, they just fade away. Now, my take on that is, applied here in Menneson, old politicians and power brokers never seem to exit city politics, and they should just fade away.
You know, uh, one thing that I would like to point out there, everybody, was Monday, I think it was Monday, this past Monday was the first day you can start circulating your petition to run for office.
For the two parties only.
For the two parties only.
That's right. It's a, it's a two law party, and it controls everybody's mind, Republican, Democrat, that's it.
That's because state law says you have to have so many, a certain percentage before you can have, be there.
Yeah, the two parties made that, uh, that term limit.
Changed the law.
But you got nine hundred thousand votes, with the signatures.
My point being, is exactly what he's saying. That if you're passionate about this city and you have the desire to do something for this city, get, go down to Greensburg, go to the election office, which is the very, go through the front door and it's the very first door on your right.
It doesn't work that way, that's too elementary.
The point being, is you go there, pick, say you wanna run for office, they will give you a form.
Yeah, no problem.
You gotta collect, I think it's a hundred.
Yeah, it's a hundred.
And you gotta pay, you gotta pay, I think, a hundred dollars.
No, just twenty-five.
Twenty-five, is it?
Listen, if you're gonna run for office, it costs far more than twenty-five dollars to run for office, I promise you that. But the point being is, if you have any inclination to do something, get your petition out there, collect the signatures, get on the ballot, and see if you can get the politi- political.
Uh, uh, I just wanna make one comment, has nothing to do with you. The people have been dumbed down to think in a group, group setting. So, the teachers will tell everybody who to vote for, the unions tell everybody who to vote for, the police officers, they all have a group be high mentality. They don't think for themselves, the people do not think for themselves. They belong to a group, and they wanna be on board with that group, and they do what the group tells them what to do. That's the problem with American politics today, period.
It may be.
It may be, I know.
Well, first off, when I, when I ran for this office, when I was presenting, it was at the end of COVID, and everybody was wearing masks, everybody was, was staying home, a lot of things were different than, than everything. The point being is, in the past, there might be, uh, uh, a, a thing held by the fire department, as an example, at the fire hall, where they invite competing people that are running for office to debate each other.
They're all the same people.
They didn't have that.
The same mindset, what are you talking about?
But that's what the whole point of this is, is you get the biggest majority you can get. You get that by going to these people and trying to win their vote.
Doesn't work that way, you gotta be in their group. If you're not recognized by their group, you get no votes.
And that's, that's what you deserve. If you're not willing to learn what those groups are doing.
About learn, you have to be like them. If you're not gonna become like them, you're out.
You know, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I know of, of, uh, a, a man that, uh, was in the last, uh.
Election.
Uh, uh, administration. Who, who met a lot of opposition from what Ernie's saying about a power group. And, and they, they tried their best, tried their best to discourage him. And that's, that's the truth of this particular council member. He, he was up against the so-called machine of Menneson.
Well, I'm not doubting that, but that's what politics is, that's the very definition of politics.
It's worse today, it, it's very infiltrated, this mindset of a group.
Absolutely it is, I'm not arguing that with you, I'm not arguing that with you that at all. I don't care if you're running for governor, for president, for mayor of, of a municipality. The first thing you do is you try to get groups of people to, to wanna vote for you. The way you do that is try to interact with that group and get them to do it. Now, does that mean that they're all blind and they're all doing them? It means that they, that's their, their viewpoint. Now, is that right or wrong? I don't, what, what's the alternative? Nope, no, no disease, no, no, no.
How do you stop this malaise i- in Menneson? Are, are people just dissatisfied with the appearance of Menneson?
Why did they elect me? Think about this, why did they elect me?
You add some help, so that's why I'm talking about it. To their committee.
Yeah. Let, let's, let's say that's the redevelopment authority. We have two mayors on the redevelopment authority, now that's ridiculous.
You also have to understand that you have two mayors on the redevelopment authority that served as mayor of Menneson. That means, that means something, because I, I don't care what you say, it is a lot of work to be mayor of Menneson.
Well, it's not about that.
I, I figured it all out, that, right now, right now, I work twelve hours a day. I got here at six thirty this morning, it's been by twelve hours already today, and this is just a short day if I was to go home right now. The point being is, you figure out why I'm being paid, it works out to a dollar fifty-three an hour. I don't, I'm not here because I'm looking for a paycheck, I'm here because I wanna make a difference to Menneson.
We're not roasting you.
That's why.
What, what I'm saying is, these, these mayors, these mayors did the same thing.
Said that the mayors in the past have had their chance.
They had their chance.
And why they back in?
And they did not improve.
Yeah, and what are they doing now? They're not doing anything better.
They can be, they can be consultants, but they can't serve. They should not be able to serve.
First off, I, I called both of them, and there's a picture in the newspaper of them sitting in my office, working on a problem with the blight. And the, the concept of this meeting was that there are property in Menneson that is blighted, that needs to be gone away. If we can get the owner of this blighted property to give this to the city, and then we release it to be demolished, the city has the power to do something with that property in the future.
That's where it's money, the nostalgia, private, uh, private law.
But one mayor, one mayor. One mayor, one mayor took, took a property in this town, which is vacant right now, and, and he's on the redevelopment authority? That, that property's sitting down there on East End Menneson, it's empty.
Which, which property are you talking about?
Are they?
Which property?
The health center.
Okay, so, let, let me say something about this. This is probably gonna get everybody in a roar. I met with Chris today, who owns Best Medical, who bought, is the one that bought that building.
Oh, you did meet him?
I met him today.
And that's what I, I asked you one time, but doesn't someone meet with these people?
I did, today, this is about that. Now, first off, Chris is a very interesting personality. He's Indian by descent, he's also getting up in age, he has no heirs. When he dies, who knows what's gonna happen to Best Medical?
Gonna give all his property to Menneson?
No, no, listen, let me finish. He truly wants to do something for Menneson. He claims that there is a certain one-man wrecking crew that destroyed his ability to do anything years ago, but now he thinks that there might be an opportunity now. I'm not gonna go in more detail than that, but other than that, so he, in talking to him today, first off, they did have a major flood. The top, one of the main six-inch lines on the top floor broke, and it flooded the building. Their insurance claim was for a million bucks. That's how they paid the city off, on the, on the loan, which is a hundred ninety thousand dollars. They invested the rest of the money in fixing that building up. And when I say fixing that up, that means bringing it up to current code. All the wiring in that building was substandard, all the, the heating and cooling was substandard, uh, everything was substandard by today's standards. You couldn't, you couldn't just fix it and walk away, you had to rebuild it, re-engineer it, meet all the current co- building codes and everything else. So, they are in fact spending eight hundred thousand dollars to fix that building back up.
So, what's he gonna do with it?
Well, okay, that's my very question to him, what are you gonna do with it? He says, well, first off, I wanna buy all the property I can in Menneson.
Another monopolist.
No.
No?
I will not agree to that.
No, 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 no.
Well.
You got five people here that own like sixty percent of the vacant property.
First off, he's thinking that first off, he runs a company called Best Medical, it has manufacturing all over the world. Now, how productive it is, I don't know, it is a closed corporation, it's owned by him one hundred percent.
But are they still looking for him to clean up the mess he left in Belgium?
So, if you wanna talk about that, I'll talk about that too, and how that transpired, but, but there's a different, there's always two sides to every story. His perspective right now is, there's a Democratic president, there's a Democratic governor.
What does it got to do with politics? If he's an individual entrepreneur and he wants to do good for the city, how is that based on politics?
Listen to what's going on, if you jump to conclusions every time somebody opens their mouth, you're never gonna learn.
With a political mindset, why?
Well, because that's what it is.
No, if you're an entrepreneur and you got money, you do things the way you wanna call it. You don't wait for a particular party to endorse you.
First off, his desire is to move manufacturing to Menneson. He wants to create a medical complex that has medical offices or research facilities to develop new products that he wants to work with. Let me finish, let me finish.
That was his original idea, let me just stop you for one second.
I was talking about.
That was his original idea, but the, the aftermath of what he was bringing in here was toxic.
It's only toxic if you have an issue, and I don't know why, why he's really trying to do it.
We're gonna get cancer first, and then we'll call it toxic.
I did research on that.
You realize that if, what he wants to do is the same thing that happens at every hospital in the basement right now today.
Yeah, you know how many people die in hospitals?
When you, yeah, and he did that in Belgium, and left all that, I, I don't think it's nuclear waste, but it's.
It's still, uh, bad, that's right.
Here, here, here's his side of the story, in Belgium. That he was working there trying to do his machine there that separates nuclear particles. And he had the Belgium government helping him clear all the nuclear regulatory things and so forth. They withdrew that from him. In Belgium, you can't just hu- claim bankruptcy and, and clean up and restart, reform. The only choice he had was to walk away from it, and it became a problem that Belgium is very upset with him over.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm not saying that that's right or wrong or anything else, but there is always two sides to every story.
Well, I think that if he decides to bring some type of medical facility in there where we're gonna be stuck with his toxic waste, somebody needs to thoroughly research that one.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Because I understood you couldn't, he couldn't use that building, first of all, to do that because it was too close to the water.
No, it was the concrete base that would make the cyc- cyclotron too difficult to build in that building.
Too close to railroad tracks.
Well, not only that, I mean, yeah, but, but the structure of the building was too thick and related for him to build the cyclotron in the basement.
Well, it was still problematic, it was still problematic.
I don't think that's the case, yeah.
I don't trust him personally.
I don't either.
Maybe you do, maybe you don't, it doesn't really matter. The, the.
I'm just letting you know.
The, the point being is, okay, let's open this up and talk a little bit bigger.
Cause I know where Guntston Hall is.
Let's, let's think about what it is we want this city to be and how we get there. And the real truth of the matter is, from my perspective, is it takes investors. It takes investors to come into town and invest in the thing. What can we do to attract investors to this town to invest in businesses that we happen to love?
Comprehensive plan, that we spent ninety thousand dollars, what was that all about? Bullshit.
That's part of it, but that, that doesn't solve the problem, that's part of it, and it, but what I'm saying is, what if we were to divide a zone in town? Maybe it's between Twelfth Street and Third Street, just as an example, between Darn and Skudemaker.
Okay, let me just say this. We had prime real estate.
That's right.
And I consider Morgan Avenue, that part is Skudemaker.
All the way up.
It's not in the past, Mayor, it's a commercial residential area.
Where?
Morgan was.
From Twelfth Street on.
That's.
That was prime property.
Prime property for residential.
It was, it was.
They covered it up, that's why.
It was prime property.
Right.
That was.
But what you have is.
The, the building that we just talked about was prime property.
You're hanging an investor before you know what he's gonna do with that.
He can't, what is he gonna do with it?
Well, those only, what can he do with it? It is zoned residential with, with commercial dots for local grocery stores and so forth, there's some.
Exactly.
The point being, that's all he can do with it.
But who's to say there couldn't have been a hotel up there?
Zone, that wouldn't meet the zoning requirements.
It's a, it's a commercial building.
No, no.
It could be fir-, it could be past Seventeenth Street.
That's right. And they could change the order.
Maybe that's what he's trying to do.
They could change the order.
The point being is, why are you hanging an investor before you know what he's gonna do?
Because he's straightforward, that's what I'm saying.
He walked away one time.
That's right, he'll walk again.
When, when has he ever walked away?
In Belgium.
We're not, we're talking about two different people now, we're talking about two different people, this is a different project.
But why doesn't he take that building and turn it into a hotel?
Which one?
The one on two.
The one he owns, Christian.
Maybe he is, I don't know, it's not laid out right. One of the problems that he did when he, when he, he collected the insurance, the insurance company said you had to lay it out the same way it was. It wasn't laid out for a hotel, it was laid out for office space.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, that was prime real estate, Morgan Avenue was prime real estate. We got prime real estate right out here in the middle of Skudemaker right now, and I'm, who owns that?
Which, where, where?
Right here, from, from citizens down to five hundred. The Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
It's a combination of the city and redevelopment authority.
All right, I'm gonna watch.
You know what you're gonna go, it's gonna be go to Jeff Ambrosia.
Not for no parking lot.
He's gonna get it because he got twenty buildings like that, thanks to the city council and the last four administrations. And that's what we got, we got collusion underneath.
That's what I'm saying, every administration we have had has sold Menneson off. That's what I'm saying, every administration we have had has sold Menneson off.
That's right.
By piece.
That's right. It's a long party.
And don't be coming driving past my house because I will, I got cameras, so I'll know who you are.
Jeff gets these prizes and he never attends a meeting.
But see, that's what I'm saying and that's the same thing Ed was talking about.
So wait a second, let's talk, let's talk about, we we keep changing subjects, it's really hard to keep track of things. First off, these are all investors that are investing money in the city.
And what's the investor, you got twenty properties and you bought it on a dime.
How many, how many complaints do students get from their students? Tell me how many complaints it's got from your students.
Excuse me?
Why, why doesn't the city invest in an experienced city planner? Who who could come into Menneson?
We're doing that right now. Trying to do that very thing, there's-
Just had meetings today on that.
But it's related to nobody here.
No, no, it's not. They've been in our trip, Linda, you know, yeah.
Is Mr. Finn, okay.
And 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 an associate of his who have a wide range of experience and we're gonna share their resumes soon.
I could talk to Mr. Finn, he, he's someone that understands.
Carnegie Mellon Group that we talked about in our meeting and others.
And yet titles don't impress me, in fact, titles frighten me.
Bernie.
I'm gonna tell you that.
Let us say this to you, we talked about-
It's gonna impress you, I'm sorry.
No, no, you you have to have that level of planning and assistance to do this and you've admitted that to me as in discussions. That's what we're going for. We can't do this as we have done in the past, or it's not gonna work.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I don't fall flat on my face because they they come from a big institution.
No, no, and I don't think this gentleman, if you would meet him, you would feel that way. He has experience, but he's-
My credentials.
Yes.
If he has the credentials of of of-
But that happened today, we had a meeting and a Zoom call with them, we're moving forward.
Guys had our meetings ago.
Just on top of that, we've got. You probably won't like this story either. Last, a year and a half ago, I was talking to Matt Urum. Matt Urum is a nonprofit, he runs a Shirenti Farms nonprofit. His goal in life is to build low cost housing for people.
He sent that back in the comprehensive plans eight years ago.
Let me finish, please. The point being is, every time I would go to these little lunch meetings he would have, they'd get to be more and more people involved in these lunch meetings. And at one point, a gentleman sits across the table from me and I started talking to him and this guy happens to sit on a board. That sits between Congress and Washington DC and HUD. And when Congress says, here's ten trillion dollars, give this money to the states for HUD, for DCD and all the other things that you do through HUD. He's one of the people that allocates this money such that we're gonna get this much for housing, this much for infrastructure, this much for whatever. And he comes to Menneson of all places. And I get, he he's at this lunch and we get up and at the time, Matt Urum was looking at building these low cost homes up at at Linden Park.
Ain't gonna work.
Well, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I just thought the story.
He talked about it eight years ago, he got zero results.
Let me, let me finish. So we go up there and Matt Urum is giving his little presentation and the whole time, this guy's not paying a lick of attention to Matt Urum. And he finally taps me on the shoulder and he says, Ron, see that house over there, it's blighted. That one, that one, that one are blighted, they gotta go. There's somebody living in this house over here, we gotta find a way to get them them some money to do something with it. The point being is, two things came out of that. First off, he was not interested in a little project, he was interested in the city as far as the eye could see. He was not interested in a little project, he was interested in major change. That's the first thing. The second thing was HUD. So when I became mayor, the very first thing I did is I called around to HUD and I find that they have a district office in Pittsburgh. Next thing you know is, they're down here in Menneson, they're talking to us about a distressed communities technical assistance program they have. And this is much like DCED that can provide technical assistance to the city, except it's coming from HUD, it's HUD money that's doing this. And these are very skilled people that are trained by the federal government to assist in distressed communities. That's what is distressed communities technical assistance. The point being is, we were assigned not one team, but two teams. And they, we're having these meetings that they're going. Now, one of the teams I see helping the city out in a big way, the other way, one I see helping out the Nehemiah project, which we haven't talked about tonight. But Nehemiah is another, another strong project that I'm very passionate about within the city. The point being is, I'm trying to bring in these, these people that have the ability to provide us guidance and assistance. They don't, won't come with any HUD money per se and say, here's some money. What they will come with is, okay, here's a bunch of grants that the HUD has, you go apply for.
Okay, as long as you don't build another project like you did up on Reed and Knox, cause those houses there.
Which project you're talking about?
Whoever brought Miranda in here.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
That should have never happened.
That doesn't meet any kind of standard that I understand.
Not. They had to, they wanted to be conducive to the neighborhoods surrounding area, houses and things, not like that. That was totally different than how the community was that they were moved into. They should have been houses similar to what were already there, like regular homes on Reed.
Nothing there, it was our school that was there.
Right, no, but yeah, but what we're saying is-
Laid out better than that.
Yeah, what they're saying is, they should have fit the community that they that was built in.
Affordable housing.
No.
No, definitely not, close to eighty thousand dollars.
That person was, it was supposed to be affordable housing, so who brought them in there?
The county.
The same county that-
Well, we should have had somebody here from the county too.
The same county that promised you.
Be very careful going forward because, once again, the county is is playing a big role in the future of Menneson.
Yeah, just like we pulled up six months ago, we're supposed to get a half a million dollars and knock down these buildings. Up to four million you were talking about, we 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 already got one thing out of them.
No, we didn't.
Oh, where's the other one coming from?
Well, first off, we've had lots of demolitions in the city, there's probably thirty or forty houses that have been demolished in the city already. They have gone out for contract for another thirty or forty.
So the county's paid for all thirty houses?
Absolutely, they paid for five hu- they they didn't pay five, they paid for the Fifth Street Hotel, they paid for the post office. There's other properties on Darn and Scoonmaker.
Several houses on McKee that have come down and dated them, uh, they're busy.
They won't say because it's not, it's not our business. And that's what I'm saying.
Secrecy again.
What post office?
Let's also talk about this for just a second. If you don't pay your taxes the first year, you're delinquent. You don't pay the taxes the second year, it goes out for tax sale. It doesn't sell in tax sale, it'll sit in this unsold category year after year after year.
Goes to the judge.
Until which time is it wins lottery basically. And in the past, the judicial system would pick fifty properties countywide and say, we will move these through the judicial system. And what happens to cities like Menneson is we have hundreds of properties that sit vacant for twenty or thirty years. By the time it it wins the lottery, it is so blighted it can't be used for anything, it is just beyond, it's hardly a shadow being cast. What the county did, when they said that they were gonna start doing this with the ARC money is, they went and sat down with the president of the co- of the Court of Common Pleas. And it got them to agree to do not one sale per year, but four sales per year. Further, they got into-
For the whole town.
Wait, wait, wait. Further, instead of doing fifty properties per sale, they're gonna do between a hundred and a hundred and fifty properties. Now we're talking six hundred properties per year. There's only five hundred and eighty-four properties in the county that are deemed to be demolition perfect. The point being is, by the end of this year, every single property that's behind on taxes will be owned by the county. Because the county can't demo the property unless they have permission to do it. The way they get permission is when it goes to judicial sale, they say, I want this property, this property, this property and this property. And by law, them being the land bank has, they override anybody that wants to bid on that property. So they automatically get all the property that's delinquent and taxes.
Okay, so you knocked down the buildings, then what you got, primary land? You gotta have somebody to take over.
Now, 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 now you're talking.
City planning's for.
That's, that's, that's exactly right, so hence, that's what was scaring me to death. First off, if you turn, during that same trip, we would go to see it, we go to East Liber- uh, East Liberty to their CDC. And the one takeaway I got from that was, he who owns the property controls the future. Well, guess who's gonna own the property in Menneson? It's not Menneson, we have three hundred properties, but that's a drop in the bucket compared to all the properties the county's gonna have.
So we're gonna have outside government that dictate local government, that's what you're telling me.
I've had knockdown dragouts with them and and-
We're gonna keep going higher and higher.
County get in here to do that?
Because they permit them.
We, we, we had to make the choice, do we wanna live with blight the rest of our lives?
You need an economy and the blight will go away.
This is a serious question. Before I became mayor, I went to to Kim Ward, Sifano, uh, to find-
They're all politicians.
Because the politicians have the money.
They're lying, that's all I know.
Well, what I'm saying is, I went to everyone up. I sat down with with Kim Ward and she got her phone and she called everybody she could think of to find money to demo properties in Menneson. What she come up with? Nothing. Everybody said, all our money is 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 earmarked to do different things, but none of it is earmarked for doing demolitions. I gave presentation to all those people, I also went to the county commissioners, not once, but probably four different times. And sat down with those people, over and over and over again, blight is a problem in Menneson, we've gotta come up with a way to em- to get rid of blight.
Just don't call me, that's why.
Well, okay, but-
Well, blight is like that in Claritin and they still got their mail.
That's right, that's right, but and they're divided, they're also-
Outside.
They're also not in this quality county. But anyway, the the, let me finish the story. First off, I became mayor and lo and behold, they finally came up and they said, you know what? We have some ARC money here, we can demo property. And when they said that, they said, we can demo property, not you can demo properties, we can demo properties.
Sovereignty went to them, not to you.
Exactly, but they're the ones that have the money, not me.
Not a Republican.
Not me, I could have said, you know what, we're gonna live with this blight, we we we've lived with it for forty years, well, live with another forty years. What did the, people elected me to make change, to improve the city, I can't make it what it was, but I can make it better. I had no choice but to say, you know what, let's work together and let's figure out a way to eliminate blight.
We're gonna sell ourselves for a higher bidder.
So, so first off-
Sold ourselves to the devil.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, maybe we did, maybe we didn't. The whole crux of this is, I said, you know what, we can't demo this property.
Just demo, we'll bring the economy up to uh, speed.
When, when you go up to Motherwell, Knox, Reed, McKee, I don't care what street you pick. In this economic zone that they define that they can do demolitions in, you go up to these neighborhoods and you see blight after blight. And a good house, blight, blight, another good house. And you look at those good houses, if somebody has pride in their house, they mow the lawn, they take care of their yard, they paint their front of the house, they do their own things. And I think, wow, we can eliminate this blight and these people are gonna uh, really love it. And they truly asked, when I went up there and talked to them, yes, I wanna get rid of this rat hole that's that's next door to me. They they begged me, you do it, please, and I did. But that also scares me to death, and I'll tell you why. Because the county's gonna own the property, we're gonna have a nice piece of property over here. Now, the county is gonna say, okay, we're gonna come up with money, we're gonna build nice new houses in this neighborhood. What happens just then? All of a sudden, you raise property value for the entire area. All of a sudden, you took somebody-
How is the property going now? Tell me, how you prove that?
Well, just listen to what I'm saying.
Money to knock down a building, the property value is gonna go up?
No, I said, they're gonna build something, they're gonna build new houses.
If they build something, my problem is, nobody's gonna build anything, because there's no economy here. You guys are really uh, putting the cart in front of the horses. It's all a political baloney, that's what I'm gonna tell you.
I understand, but the point being with this is, if you raise the property value, that nice house that was once there, their taxes are gonna go up.
Only the economy can raise property value, only the economy can.
Okay, who's gonna raise those taxes?
Excuse me?
Who's gonna raise those taxes?
The city, the problem is, is you raise the property value of the house, the house is all of a sudden worth more.
But you're not offering us anything.
That's right, all they do is take more money, they're taking more money from us.
Nothing here to even warrant our taxes being as high as they are.
That's right, and it's gonna get worse.
They are because of the expenses we have here.
Well, that's not our issue.
Yeah, their unions are what are causing the expenses, cost of living, pension plan, everything, that's what's going on.
You raise our taxes, we get nothing.
I'm not, I'm not raising the taxes, ta- the pro- the tax assessor will-
Yeah, okay, they'll push the tax assessor.
They have a tax system area since nineteen sixty-three.
But they're gonna write them so they get the taxes up.
You cannot raise the taxes anymore in Menneson.
So they're gonna bring it outside.
Well, then what are you talking about, they're not gonna raise them up anymore, so if they do feel they need development.
Ten thousand dollars because it was surrounded by blight, now it has good houses, that house that was worth ten thousand.
If you got good houses, they're putting the cart in front of the horses.
All of a sudden, they're te- what they have to pay on taxes went up. Now, what happens then is that you've done gentrification, you have squeezed out the residents out of town, and I cannot do that. And hence, what I really came up with was-
They've been doing for a hundred years.
I'm different, at least I'm trying to do different.
I'm different, you're selling your sovereignty of the city to a county now.
You're, you're attacking before you know the facts, aren't you? The, 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 what I did was I formed what we call a Nehemiah of Menneson CDC.
These religious terms, Nehemiah, what's that gonna do? That's gonna bring uh, uh, Christ down and save us?
We have um, Marguerite, we have Locust, we have um. I think Marguerite only has three houses on it and I think one person is living on, that's a whole block.
Right.
And then part is Salmon.
Right.
They can start there.
Right. Right, so what, what the goal is, and you're exactly right, what I'm really hopeful for is that we get a couple things going. We start getting some investors come in and provide some employment for people, that's one thing. But the other part of it is, that the Nehemiah group gets funded well enough that they can afford to to clean up and build new houses that are affordable for people.
They're not gonna build anything, you gotta have people who got the money to pay for it. If you don't got those people, who's gonna build it? You gonna build shit outs and then wait for the public to come in and fill it up?
Again, you're not listening to what I'm saying. The Nehemiah group will build this, they'd have the funding to do it. And if they could do this in such a way that they could fund the the loan for the house. Now you have housing that's probably cheaper than the rental rentals that you're renting property for. You could probably buy it for less than what you're paying for rent. And there's still a lot of people renting houses in in Menneson. And if you can do that, and you, this is an internal fund that the Nehemiah group can have. They can use the revenue from that to do the next one and the next one and the next one, it becomes a revolving account that they can do. So that's what the goal of this is.
Okay, but see, they have a start, they have, like I said, all of Marguerite.
Right, right.
And part of-
Maybe, maybe that's the right place, maybe it's not, and that's part of the choices I'm saying. What, parts of, just because it's blighted property, you gotta figure out who owns it and so forth.
There's, there's, there's two blighted houses or three blighted houses on-
And the rest are gone.
On, on Marguerite.
Right, and maybe that's the perfect neighborhood, I'm not saying it's not.
Ten or twelve houses up there.
I'm not saying it's not, but the Nehemiah group needs to figure out where they wanna start, they need to find the funding and start going on.
You can even start on Claritin, Claritin's just back.
And two or three.
I mean, I drove around because I was researching something else. And I was appalled when I went across Rebecca and up towards um. Lenaway, up in that area over there.
Look at this.
Lenaway looks horrible.
But-
This is what I have the ability to do, the city, when I say I, I mean the city.
With funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is what the Nehemiah group can work with.
This is what property that the city owns.
Money, he's saying when they get funds. Well, this is all, putting the cart in front of the horses.
I have a question, uh, Mike. When you, you're working, so you're working with uh, the program to get a city planner in. So at that same time, is there a group that could reach out to different, like you said, businesses? Like whether it's a, whether it, whether it's a, a, a met like UPMs, whether it's a one of the insurance company group. Or whether it's a, a, a nice, like Chick-fil-A or something like that. Can reach, during that, have people reach out for businesses to, to talk to them, say, this would be a prime location. Because everybody here goes this way, why can't we have it here, let them come here. Why can't we have it here, let them come here, there's so many places people will go down to fifty-one, but if you got this whole Mon Valley, that's a wide service area. That you can reach, so you know, if we can incorporate that into that, that would help us, you know, as well as somehow getting that Chamber of Commerce back in. But that can, that can even go by the wayside, if we can incorporate into what you're doing with the city plan. No, but I mean, I don't, I'm just saying, I don't think he's heard back, but I think it's a good thing, but he sent letters to them all, so hopefully they do report back and combine again. But in the meantime, you know, they can start with that.
I talked to six Manassas, businesses, and they belong to the Mon Valley.
Right.
They're never gonna join Manassas, okay, Manassas has to prove themselves, two years, and then they'll come in. He's thinking they're all gonna jump ship, they come in, they're not gonna do it.
I know, I know.
But you gotta start somewhere, if you never start, you're never getting one.
I have one question, has anybody from city council gone down and welcomed Suntory Kitchen and Bath to Manassas?
I don't know, where are they at?
Where are they at?
I don't believe me. No, but they had.
Where are they at?
Bell Vernon.
Oh, but I mean, are they here in Manassas?
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I didn't know they were in Manassas.
I didn't know either.
But what I'm saying is, if anybody went down there and welcomed them back, they're in the old carpe place.
Well, we don't know them. Where are they at?
Are they really?
Well, they just, well, see, I think they, no one knew that, I saw people in there, but no one knew who was coming in there, I know I didn't.
I didn't.
Until, but I didn't even, all I saw was the doors open and stuff.
That's the point, that's what I'm telling you.
Right, but that should be.
They don't go there tomorrow.
But I mean, shouldn't we have, but don't you know when people are coming into Manassas?
Exactly.
Don't they have to come through the city to get permits?
Did you not ask how many people moved out?
That's what, to get permits or something, they have to come to the city, right?
Realtor, and he said, I can't give you exact numbers, but more people moved out and moved in.
Yeah, you would think they'd come to the city to get permits.
And that's why I had said, I had asked the city council long time ago.
They don't have those facts, yeah.
Why can't you have a, uh, cause you asked that question before, we don't know who's moving into Manassas.
A welcoming committee. A welcome committee.
That's right.
But if we had something, whether you gave them a laundry basket full of.
A welcoming committee.
Uh.
A welcome committee, that goes to them.
Yeah, laundry stuff.
Or business proofing stacks, but they gave them a business proofing stacks.
Or gave them a gift card. You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying, well, we could have called the welcome group or something like that.
I know we don't have anything in our budget to get a, a welcome basket, it'd be hard to get it through our CFO, but I don't have any problem doing that.
Well, I just told you, you need to start a budget for something else, so you need to start a budget for that.
You're telling me you got all these groups that are gonna pop out of money, who's gonna do a basket?
Years ago, years ago, I think I can remember my parents getting something from the city, when I was a little kid, when we bought our house.
That was where Manassas had an economy.
Chamber of Commerce.
We've been cutting.
Well, yeah, that's something the Chamber of Commerce should institute.
Absolutely, without a doubt.
If we wanna be a friendly city, and we want people to come here and live.
Who's at the library, is there a fenced-in area down from that garage? Did I see a fenced-in area on that lot?
Well, after the garage.
They're probably keeping mud off of the properties. There's a what?
After the garage, if the tentsies is a space.
The chessees.
Yeah, there's a space between that and the garage.
Right, where the tree is, yeah.
Who's, who's gonna own that, I don't know, who owns that?
He owns right up to twenty feet within the chessees.
We're gonna redevelop.
Is that the tree, has they took the tree too?
No, I don't think so, well, maybe they did, maybe they did, I don't know.
The tree is theirs, because we had to ask permission to light it.
It's just, it's just beyond that, because that's, I consider that part of our downtown.
That's right.
It is, absolutely.
Yeah, what is the garage gonna do, how much money is it gonna bring?
The garage, it's a flooring, a flooring contractor.
I don't care, you already got two employees.
Maybe he does today, but he's a business, he wants to grow.
Well, then he should be down there by Lumosaurus somewhere.
That's right.
Maybe, but he's an investor that came to town.
He's no investor.
He's no investor, come on, you guys gave him that.
You don't build that, really, for free.
Okay, 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 Mayor, please, do not, do not go down that road, okay?
Well, first off, explain to me what investor is then.
I'm an adult.
Explain an investor.
Who's he investing, what is, how many people is he gonna employ?
I have no idea, but he invested in a building, he invested in the property, that's an investor.
Two, I know two people. Now, I'm a city expert.
In the middle of town.
Probably, probably a hundred, no, probably a hundred fifty, I don't know how much it costs for a building.
Sixty-something, a hundred dollars.
In the middle, in the middle of town, next to the library, a flooring place, that's like when, what's his name, gave his speech in front of the, um. Up in New York, in front of the, what's it, was it a strip club?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what that's like.
Giuliani.
That's what that is like.
I'm saying that's an investor that came to town, he invested in the city.
He didn't come to town, he's from Manassas, what are you talking about?
Okay, that's what I'm saying, don't go down that road, we, all, everybody in this room knows how he acquired that property.
Just like Jeff Abrams, who acquired twenty buildings.
He bought from redevelopment authority, which that's what redevelopment authority does, is sell it to investors.
That's why I get rid of the redevelopment authority.
Well, maybe so.
Well, like I'm saying, somebody wanted to invest in that lawn before he did it, and they wouldn't sell it to him.
Who?
The library was gonna buy that property.
Not until after he had already bought it.
No, 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 this was about, what, three or four years ago.
They wanted it before, that's right, they wanted it before.
Well, I don't know.
Before they put the garden in there.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's what I'm saying.
They wanted it for the kids, they wanted it for the kids.
Do not go down that road, because I'm being truthful.
I also think that you need to understand that we need to get investors here, now, we have some flexibility in attracting different types of investors, and that's where we need to come together.
Yeah, even if they employ ten people.
Yeah, but not two.
What if it was twenty, what if it was fifty?
Yeah.
He's not gonna employ ten or fifteen people.
I, I don't know, if he grows a business and he's applying for it everywhere, I don't know.
He's not around to bring her like that.
Okay.
He is an entrepreneur.
I'm gonna let you have this one, Mayor, okay?
I'm not saying this right or wrong, what I am saying is, that we as a city need to understand what kind of investors we want, and to figure out a way to attract that type of investors in the city.
Okay, well, we got a good one, we got Suntory Kitchen and Bath coming in here, somebody from city council needs to go out and welcome them back.
And I will.
And I know, I think one of the things that they're pointing at is, and I can see what they're making, you want your downtown, as you want your neighborhood to be cohesive, and on the same line. So, if you got a library, you want something on the same structure, with windows, or whatever, that makes, that is uniform.
So, why, if it's gonna have a book, why don't we do a showroom?
Yeah, you want it uniform, right.
I can deal with a showroom.
Right, so they're trying to make it, what they're, their point is, you would like it to be uniform, so it has a nice flow, visually appealing to the public as you ride through.
Visually, that has to be attractive, visually, that is very attractive.
As you ride through, you want that to be visually continuous, as you go through, and I think that's what it is.
Now, people are gonna do a showroom.
We do have zoning requirements, so if our zoning requirements are not stringent enough to force the type of business we want, we need to, to make a change.
Well, I don't know who's zoned, I don't know who's zoned that, who's zoned that?
The planning commission, the zoning, and the council approved it, we, we had, we hired Walt Hagland's group, what's it called? We hired that group to, to develop a zoning.
Don't put Mike on the spot, he's okay.
Every street in Manassas, he can tell you more about what color a house is, any particular place is.
I don't, you know, what, it's, it's a garage.
That's right.
If it was a showroom with a garage behind it, I would accept it, it's a garage.
So is the fire department, fire department is gonna grow.
But the fire department is a building and looks visually okay.
And it's public service.
Let's see what this place looks like, because if it doesn't meet the code requirements, then that doesn't.
You guys are gonna do nothing to them, never make a collusion.
He's not gonna tear down the building, he's not gonna do any more improvements from it. So, like I'm saying, from here on, you should have it, oh, how many people have come down here for, when I went to get my doggy license? How many people have come down here for the downtown Manassas building facade improvement grant program? How many people have come down here for this?
Probably about a half a dozen.
Half a dozen or so, yes, yeah.
And has any of them been granted?
Yes, every one of them that's applied has been granted.
And where do structures at, cause I don't see no improvement.
The Freddy's is one of them, the, the.
Who?
The Freddy's.
Nefertiti's, no, Nefertiti's the character. Well, what did they do?
They, they started painting, they're starting to paint on the outside and everything.
They did their facade, the historic societies won, but there's.
Yeah.
There's about a half a dozen that did it, now, that, that grant requires a matching grant, matching fund too. You have to have a business that's willing to invest the equal amount to, to what they're requesting.
How many of them got matching grants?
Every one that applied for it, done, every single one, and there's still money there, and if you got a business and you wanna improve your facade, come to the city and fill out the application.
They got matching grants.
But did you put any stipulations on how they should do their storefront?
Read the application, and there is zoning requirements, you can't.
TCD puts those, the requirements, and by the way, Walt Hagland is creative design, like, mental lapse there. But yeah, TCD requires, and gives you the requirements for what the facade has to meet.
Okay, you said one business, Mayor, what's the, who's the other one?
Well, I said, half a dozen businesses have done.
I can get you the list, then, for sure, yeah, a couple were done before I came in, so.
I don't know what my. Yeah, some of them were done before, some of them recently, and the program still has money in it, and if you've got a business on, in a commercial district, and you wanna improve your facade. Please come down and fill out an application, because it won't be there forever.
Yeah, come down and smell the odor from the co-plant.
I've smelt the milk on my leg, so that ain't nothing new.
So, first off, you two have been donating anything, is there anybody else that's got anything they'd like to talk about?
That's what I'm knowing.
Any subjects you guys would like us to?
You guys must have, I know, you, you came for a reason.
I'm sure that Ernie and I, or not the only person.
Yeah, they came for a reason.
I have three of you.
Head to speak, something.
Head to speak.
But you came, I know everyone came for a reason, so this is what it's open for.
I think the bottom line is, it's hard to get businesses to make stuff in the United States and stay here. You had the mill for years, it's faltering, you just got the co-plant, it's very hard to attract a business that's gonna stay here and make things here without moving out. Wasn't that Miranda Home supposed to go down, or where the twelve street gate of the mill was, am I right?
They were down there, they left.
They were down there, they, they left.
So, that's a good example, it's hard to get, even businesses, it's hard to get businesses to stay here.
But they didn't do what they were supposed to do, anyway.
So, it's just very hard to do, it's a, it's a town.
Okay, why doesn't somebody start a brewery? I, I drink beer sometimes.
There's too many of them, there's like three hundred of them.
There may be a hundred of them, but there's not one.
In the valley.
So, we're gonna get drunk, we're gonna get drunk, then we're gonna see, we're gonna see, not, but blight.
I mean, there's so many. They don't get drunk, there's beer everywhere, but they don't get drunk.
There's another thing you have to realize, Lois, it's millennials that are gonna move in here.
No, well, that's why I said breweries are not, I was saying, he was saying they'll get drunk, but breweries, I have nothing against them, but I would just say, Ernie, there's nothing wrong with a brewery.
Okay, but let me just ask this, what constitute five hotels being built out in Bell Vernon in two years?
Well, they got four hundred and eighty businesses.
They thought it was the well, the wells.
What do we got?
But what I'm saying is that, why couldn't we build a hotel to get the overflow?
Who's got the money to build it?
Because I thought you were bringing in investors.
Yeah, you said you were bringing funds in.
That's what I'm saying, you gotta have the investor.
Well, in, in order, you can't say who's gonna come in here, if you haven't approached anyone.
That's right, that's what they put.
So, like I'm saying, don't.
Get money to hire somebody to do nothing but approach people.
They're putting the cart in front of the horses.
Okay, oh, we gotta be realistic about this, I'm not, first of all, I'm not a millennial, I see through stuff very quickly. So, don't BS me like that, in order for us to get our money back in Manassas instead of going out to Bell Vernon. We gotta bring something in here, and I discussed this with you once before, and you were saying that we're too far off of the interstate. No, we are not.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
I'm sure that there's doctors and surgeons and administrators to come into Chalroy, they could stay here in our hotel.
I agree.
You could come right off of seventy.
I agree.
And come right here.
I agree, so we need to find an investor to build us a hotel.
Yeah.
Correct.
Before you spend money to knock down buildings.
Where they're gonna eat breakfast.
We, we have breakfast places to eat in Manassas.
What happens to Subway, I mean, did somebody, did somebody go down and say, what happened to Subway?
Oh. Let me, no, I'm gonna enlighten you, and I thought you were here the last time we had a council meeting, because we discussed it. The reason why we don't have a Subway anymore is because of that shopping center down there where it was. The owner didn't want.
Fix the roof.
To fix it up, Subway wanted to improve it, and they were willing to pay half of the cost.
But he wasn't.
And the owner did not wanna put forth money, and I sat down there, and I interviewed the, um, no, the manager of that store.
He got no money, great.
Because everybody liked Subway, so now we either had to go to Bell Vernon or to Chalroy. Now.
You'll never get a McDonald's.
Oh, they wouldn't let a McDonald's come in here years ago, I understand that.
They're not gonna let McDonald's.
So, my thing is, that's why we don't have a Subway, and I brought it up before.
And about Booz Mobile, they've been closed since last June, Booz Mobile on Donner Avenue.
Who?
It's Shuffler.
Booz Mobile, Shuffler, he's been closing for June.
Oh, they're gone too?
He was there for a few years, and then he caused that to.
So, that building's empty, besides the sound like it?
Well, he owns the building, but he ain't going nothing with it, he said he lost a lot of.
One of the things that, that Manassas needs to do, and it's gonna take some time to bring investors in, but the very first thing we gotta do, is the people in Manassas need to patronize the people that are in town.
Well, what are you gonna patronize, when they don't serve?
No, 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 that is not it.
If they don't patronize anybody, why would anybody else come, because they're.
What are you gonna serve?
That is not it.
That is part of it.
Nobody got bad service and low quality.
If there was something here, well, like I'm saying, I participate, I go to By George's, I go to La Eater's, I go to all the restaurants here whenever I do eat out. And if I don't eat out, the person I work for eats out.
So, so go to, go to, to By George on a Friday evening, and look around.
It doesn't have to be a Friday evening, you can go there Monday, through Wednesday, and the parking lot is full.
No, no. What I'm saying is, you go there on a Friday evening, and you look around, you will not recognize another soul in there from Manassas, that's a very positive thing. It attracts people from, from Pittsburgh, from Washington.
So, that's the sense, so that's the sense, he attracts his house.
Absolutely, absolutely, but think about this, and you can talk to Russell at Steel, at Steel Plate, why does Russell have an Italian item on his menu when he cooks barbecue? He cooks some of the best barbecue around, but yet, he put a, a thing on Italian food for one reason. If you drive here from Pittsburgh, and you walk up to By George, and it's full, and it will be full every Friday night, because that's the kind of business they do. The very first thing you do, you pick up your phone and say, Italian food near me, and up pops Steel Plate, up pops La Eater's, up pops, uh.
Well, that's the same thing I said about the hotel.
They're too high skilled, people want, uh, they want in and out, like, uh, Wendy's or, uh, people want in and out, and they don't wanna pay twenty, twenty-five dollars for a meal.
Try it for it.
That's why, that's why George's doesn't have Manassas resident coming down there, all, all the people there are from out of town, because they have the money.
Too expensive.
Well, it's also a superb menu that really attracts them, and he fixed the place up nice, just as some of the other restaurants have done.
Yeah, but he, he got no Manassas patrons, that's what he was saying.
Well, it may be, but I really believe it's because they built a nice place, and they got the customers to come in, he runs a profitable business, and I have.
And he's on the end of town.
Yeah.
Well, this, let me say, every restaurant in here, every restaurant in Manassas has their own clientele.
They do, but they all offer something on the Italian menu, because that's what sells in the Manassas, you don't see a Chinese place, you don't see hibachi in Manassas.
Yeah, that's beside the point.
Not because they're not good food, it's because they wouldn't have any clientele, they know if they're gonna do it, they gotta do Italian food. And every time another Italian food restaurant opens up in town, everybody shakes their head, why do we need another one, it's because that's what sells.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know about that.
I don't know about that.
I, I can't agree with that one.
Well, maybe, but that's what investors are saying, because that's what's happening.
They, they cornered the market, there's nobody else they're competing against.
It's because that's where the market is.
Everybody doesn't like Italian food, everybody doesn't like Greek food.
I agree. I agree.
There's hardly any Greek food down there, I mean, a Greek salad and one or two dishes.
By George offers Greek food, but he's, he's still asking about Italian food.
He got more down in Greece.
Pretty tasty, though.
Yeah, but it ain't all good.
I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just saying that's what's really happened, investors go where they can make money.
This is the discussion.
Yeah, it is, but investors go where they can make money, we need to make a, we need to make a, a, a community where they can make money.
There has to be an economy here to make money.
That will cause investors to come to this town.
If you don't have an economy, no investor's gonna come, where they can make money from.
Economy is to have investors.
You don't have industry.
Yeah, that's what the economy, that's what I'm saying.
We have to bring, why can't we get a medical facility in here, a state-of-the-art medical facility?
Well, you don't like best medical, so maybe you'll like UPMC, maybe you'll like UFC.
No, it doesn't, we're talking about medicine, we're not talking about nuclear.
I'm not talking nuclear either, I'm talking about medicine.
That's nuclear waste, we're not talking about that, I'm talking about doctors, specialists.
Yeah, like medical practices.
That's what they didn't show.
Oticians, enter eyes and nose and drug people.
Yeah, definitely.
That'll work.
Where's the other people gonna work, that's just professional.
No, it's for us to go to them, so we don't have to drive down to the curb.
Well, yeah, they don't go there, they don't have a job to do or something.
Stay with Jefferson.
No, I mean, so you don't have to, so you don't have to go down there.
The real problem is, the steel industry is not what it once was, even if you were to open up a new steel plant, it wouldn't have the thousands of people working there un, as unseen.
Well, we're not talking about steel plant.
They would be, and it would be very skilled labor that works in a, in a plant.
You know what the new industry is, A I, robotics, and nobody's chasing them here.
But this morning.
It's my little brother.
This morning, going down to Red.
They don't, they don't even have one.
That cook lad caused the fall, all the way down the river, and I could smell it.
They don't, and and not being, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah.
Now, in a world where wanna come into Menneson with some business.
If you could smell it, something went wrong, because that should be nothing.
There was a zoning laws for that, nobody goes to check on their um pollution, no.
There there there, we have, he came, we have monitors around here, it should be checking, is the flame scoring?
Oh, what, did you call him in?
It wouldn't be, was the flame going? No, I I had driven down to go to Keyston Bakery.
If the flame is out, you need to call somebody, I don't know you sure who it would be, but something, there's an upset.
Well, look at, look at the trouble Ross River Township had with the landfill, year after year after year, and and the state, the state didn't do anything, they they didn't.
It's all cooh.
And what did Ross River do with little, little uh.
But the state actually did.
Why don't you get those two back there before we wrap this up?
Do you know what's going on, does anybody know what's going on?
Where was Ross River Apartments put in Menneson Township, you know, on the border between Ross River and Menneson, it wasn't out there by the high school.
Right, no.
They guys, back in the back, you guys got anything you wanna talk about?
I just wanna make the point that I wanna see the blight removal continue.
Okay.
Yeah, losing taxidermy.
I'm all for that.
That is the most important thing.
I agree with you, but not everybody does.
Figure a way to prevent future, right?
Oh, no, that that's what I'm saying.
That that that's a.
We want the blight gone, but we want something to replace the blight.
That's the M I project.
Guys will go to replace it with something.
The N E M I project is my biggest.
They wanna knock it down first with no um visual.
Plans.
Well, I'm sorry, we've got plans.
Because, okay, because the N E M I project should have been roaming around Menneson.
Play it though.
We we got the plans.
Yeah, we do, Eric.
Okay, what plans you got?
See, what they do or can be developed, other than looking on that sheet of paper.
Absolutely, now bear in mind, the N E M I project's only been going for a couple months.
N E M I.
Oh, I'm wa, you better believe I'm watching them.
Okay, good, good.
And I'm gonna direct them what I have to.
Okay.
Maybe Menneson residents should be convinced of this, maybe they should know what the pla- what.
Absolutely, and that's what we're gonna be doing soon.
Plans, making this newspaper instead of talking about White Oak and McKeastport and every other town south of the city, if it would.
I think newspaper does well.
It would, it would, like a, like a, that was keeping the newspaper alive.
You you're gonna be hearing very soon about this planning.
Yeah.
And and maybe, there are a few people in Menneson who say, yeah.
And already that goes, yeah.
We'll have to be, Mon Valley Independent is now published in McKeastport, the Valley Independent before that was in Menneson, that's why McKeastport gets.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
They have an office here on the up, uh, in the park plan, but.
What about you, sir, do you got any, anything you'd like to talk about?
I guess some of my concerns, I mean, covered, talked about blight and uh, I mean, from, again, traveling from down Ross River Street to Knox to Oneida, I must have saw at least a dozen houses that were dilapidated, at least a dozen, not more.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Jensen.
And they are coming down.
Some of the other issues that uh, that I'm probably concerned with, uh, people part, like if they have, let's say, a business that they run, let's say, I don't know, what type of business, parking their equipment on the streets. I see boats parked on the street.
Mm-hmm, code enforcement, in other words.
Pardon?
Code enforcement, in other words.
Code enforcement on on those things, uh, general cleanup of people's properties.
Code enforcement, yeah.
I mean, I, again, I I I walked this morning and uh, and it was up near Marion Avenue up there, it was garbage day.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and there was a house, they had their garbage out, but fifteen feet from their garbage, they had a couch, they had maybe a dozen other pieces of garbage that were sitting there, you know, in their front yard.
You're describing to me a code enforcement issue, which is the same reason, how do we prevent it from happening in the future, it's all code enforcement.
I think you would bring. Menneson look better, they just, if it was, you know, cleaned up and thought after people, all those things.
Did they have any sofa out for trash, or did they just have a sofa in your yard?
It's in between.
Who knows?
It wasn't in the house, it wasn't on the porch, but it wasn't out from the trash.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
Uh, clean, and and from a city perspective, cleanup, you ever try to walk down Third Street on the sidewalk? I mean, the sidewalk's just covered in leaves, I mean, I understand that the leaves smell, but.
So, one of the things that we need to start talking about is the city cleanup day again, like we did last year.
Oh, we're gonna have it April, yeah.
Yeah, when when the weather warms up, I think that we really need to publicize and get everybody out of their house, and to help us pick up the trash in Menneson.
And but they need to realize, one of the things you need to realize, cle- cleanup day is not gonna do it, one, one weekend is not it. It's a, my thing is, it's a continual thing, and you don't have to go out every week, but at least once a month, you can vote, somebody on your neighborhood should go do your block, and it doesn't have to always be the same person, but if you take once a month and somebody else does it once a month or the next month, your neighborhood's gonna stay clean, because it, I, uh, between me and my brother, I think we did, we took care of all summer, we took care of Reed Avenue, we took care of, go, um, is it the street Nizaki's on, Knox from ninth all the way around and going down halfway to Sixth and McKee. And it can be done, but it shouldn't be the same people, if we live here and we want people to wanna come and beautify city, it takes all of us. And you can't sit in your house and complain about trash when it's right out in front of your house and you see it every day and you don't pick it up. But another neighbor comes and cleans your whole street in front of your house and you just stand there and look at them?
Yeah, you'll do it again, you'll dump, you'll dump that trash.
Right. Right, and you watch your neighbor cleaning in front of your house and you can't sweep up your own trash after garbage day.
If they see someone do this.
Okay, see, Lois, you got a point there, but if you don't know your neighbors.
Get out and meet them.
That's, that's what I do.
Exactly. Cause I police, I police through the water.
My whole neighborhood, I know people on almost every block.
What if they get like, they're gonna pull a gun on you?
But.
You know, I'm not afraid to walk any street in this town, I'm I'm truly not. I was walking down McKee, and guy comes out and starts making, you know, conversation with, it turns out it's your brother, I do believe.
Yeah, it.
The point being is, there are people in this town that are willing to interact with others, and I think that we all need to get to where we're doing it at, it becomes a community, it becomes.
They care.
Yeah, my neighbor gets out and sweeps her, and she only, I only have an eighteen inch sidewalk for some reason, but she does too. But she gets out there and she sweeps her sidewalk because they have this.
And they're not the people that are littering around town.
Yeah, everybody has to, it takes all of us, we all have to get out and do the part.
We did that on Morgan, we swept our sidewalks, and at that time, you could actually burn by the curb.
But you guys have a shortage, you didn't replace Mark in the city park.
We're trying.
Oh, they're hiring, the interviews are coming up, but.
Oh, yeah, because uh, summer's coming.
Right.
That's another thing, this gentleman was saying that um, there was a sofa that was halfway in the yard and halfway not in the yard or on the porch. Why can't we have a designated place to where us as residents can take paint, um,
Couches.
sofas, refrigerators.
So, we can put out the garbage, it don't take it.
Yeah, garb, the garbage will take it, but you have to let them know you're putting out extra things, so they can prepare to pick that up.
You gotta at least put it in the curb.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, not just having it sit there. Yeah, when you put out a whole lot of extra things, you do need to notify them, so they know, prepare, I'm picking up a major load of stuff from this house.
And they will.
Oh, no, okay, the next, okay, our trash day is on Tuesday, I'm gonna take a picture of the trash that people put out on my street.
Some people, loaded, yeah, they loaded out.
But you know when the city put out uh uh, containers at the city garage for cardboard and papers?
Recycled.
They just, people just threw stuff on the ground, instead of breaking boxes up, they'd put it in front. I I always, I like that, I could throw old magazines, old newspapers, boxes, but the local residents just, a- again, for trash,